Just to say that the board was met in executive session about a real estate matter. And let's start the regular meeting for March.
Mr. DiMillo?
Here.
Mrs. Hall?
Present.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Heilmann?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
We will have opening prayer led by Mary Catherine Dobrosky from the Surrey Center.
Let us be a cha-- is this one?
Yes.
Okay. Let us be a channel of peace, that where there is hatred, we may bring love; that where there is wrong, we may bring the spirit of forgiveness; that where there is discord, we may bring harmony; that where there is error, we may bring truth; that where there is doubt, we may bring faith; that where there is despair, we may bring hope; that where there are shadows, we may bring light; where there is sadness, we may bring joy. May we seek to comfort rather than be comforted, to understand rather than to be understood, to love rather than be loved; for it is by giving that one receives, and it is by forgiving that one is forgiven.
Amen.
Amen.
Aman. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, the father's here, so you go all three at once.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I'd like to take a moment to recognize our new state representative, Jamie Santoro, who now represents the 1st and 9th Ward, which Mr. DiMillo represents the 1st and myself the 9th. And with your permission, I'd like to ask him to come up and address us for a brief moment before we get started.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm here informally tonight. I'm just here as a member of the 163rd, which, as Mr. Wexler said, the 1st and 9th Wards of Havertown Township are a part of, and just want to see the ongo-- the goings-on in here in Havertown, Havertown Township. I'll be doing that from time to time. I think you probably may know that I'm meeting with staff members at each of the townships and seeing how I can assist from the state level with any various projects or going-ons in the township. I know one that we're focused on is the Route 3 corridor and trying to get those lights timed. It's a big project for all involved, and I've already started conversations with PennDOT as well as with Mr. Adolf, who represents Marple Township further up the road, that will allow us to work in conjunction from-- during that-- for that project. So, we're hitting the ground running, trying to get some things done. Again, I'm just here informally to visit the commissioners' meeting. I will do that from time to time, and feel free to call on me for anything you need as a township if I can help out. I'd love to do it. I want to be a part of Havertown Township as well as the rest of my district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Aliva.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have proclamations.
Yes.
Yep.
This first proclamation is for a good friend of mine from the Cooperstown area, who has been trying out for the-- has been participating in the Winter Olympics for Pennsylvania, Special Olympics for Pennsylvania for the last 14 years. For 12 of them, he's actually qualified to go to the state championships, but due to work, school, a few other things, he hasn't been able to go. He's only been able to go twice. This year, he brought the gold medal home to Havertown, so I'm very proud of him, and Cooperstown, I might add. So, the proclamation is here.
Commissioner Aliva, you want to step into?
Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults--
Get this off. The glare is like something--
--great achievements of young adults in the community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wished to applaud David Welsh, who competed in figure skating during the Pennsylvania Special Olympics Championship held in Johnstown, PA, David brought home the gold medal. Whereas now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates David for your outstanding dedication and performance. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Proclaimed this 9th day of March, AD 2015.
Where we can get everybody in here.
Just go forward. Go forward, Jim.
Come on up here, David. I'll get next to Cap. All right, great job. Thank you.
All right, you're on.
Thank you. Now, also another young adult from the 5th Ward, Andy Ames received his Eagle Scout this year. I've known Andy. I coached him in T-ball. I still say he's one of the nicest kids I ever met. He was the one kid who walked up, and I don't think it was with parent prodding, and thanked me after every game. And I really-- I've always appreciated that. So, whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wished to applaud Andy Ames of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 19, Bryn Mawr, and whereas Randy's Eagle Scout project, he planned, planted, and installed deteriorated headstones, headstone plaques on the graves of Revolutionary War veterans at Bryn Mawr Baptist Church. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Andy for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Proclaimed-- well, it says February 26th, but it's also March 9th, so come on. That was the day to start on.
Go, Bob. You hold that. There we go. Cool. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I will do that. Yes. Yep, I will do that. Yep. Okay. And the last one, also an Eagle Scout, and this is a kid who I've known, I believe, since he was born, and also another really great kid, is I think any Eagle Scout probably is. It's for Andrew Field. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wished to applaud Andrew Field, whereas Andrew has served in Troop 19 of Bryn Mawr for four and a half years, he's been actively involved as a den chief for PAC 500 of Cooperstown. And whereas Andrew's Eagle Project was building two dugout weather shelters at Havertown Township Little League for the Minor League Field. The project took several days, and Andrew was able to have Lowe's of Havertown donate and discount the supplies needed to complete the project. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havertown, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Andrew for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges. Proclaimed this day, 26th day of February, AD 15, also March 9th. While we're at it, we have a few scouts that will be here in a number of years for their Ego badges, too. They're here, they have to get their merit badge for attending a commissioners' meeting or, you know, a town meeting of some kind. So, we have, what, four of you here? Do you want to come up and say your names? Or we got more? Oh, we got one there, too. There's another one. I know Andrew, but, yeah.
There we go. Let's say your name in the microphone.
James Velligan.
Okay.
Kevin Bell.
Brian Houck.
Sean Houck.
It might be a little low for you.
Andrew, dear.
There you go.
All right. Nice work.
Big words, man.
Nice work, Commissioner Harmon. Now, we move on to number three, approval of Police Department. Chairman? Janet, you want to?
I'm sorry, she has to do her.
Janet has to--
You're right. I forgot.
You're on.
Okay. Presently, we still have a vacancy in our police department. Last month, the Board of Commissioners approved a certified eligibility list, and based on that list, I'm going to read the eligible names. So, in first place is Andrew Jones, second is Justin Echavaria, and third is Kevin Rapp.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make-- to make a motion that we approve a conditional level appointment for Andrew Jones.
I second that motion.
Okay. Just a little explanation. We-- would you like to explain?
Pardon?
Would you like to explain why we're hiring another police officer?
We're not hiring another police officer. One that was designated last month is--
Took another position.
He's somewhere else in another police department.
Thanks for explaining that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right?
Good.
Please call the roll. Mr. DiMillo?
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Hall?
Yes, to Mr. Jones.
Mr. Siegel? Yes, to Mr. Jones. To Heilmann?
Yes, to Mr. Jones.
To Holmes?
Yes.
To McGarretty?
Mr. Jones?
To Wexler?
Yes, for Mr. Jones.
To Connell?
Yes, for Mr. Jones.
To Mr. Aliva? Yes, for Mr. Jones. Okay, moving on. Township order update?
It's here.
You here today?
Yeah.
No, Mr. Jones.
Oh, no, Mr. Jones is here. Is he here?
Who? Right here.
No, no. That's Gary Slade.
Officer. You want to see the officer?
I've reviewed the expenditures for the period commencing February 10th, 2015, and ending March 9th, 2015. I asked certain questions. I also asked for substantiation of certain expenses. All the answers were provided to my satisfaction, and I received the substantiation material to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, we'll start with Citizens Forum. These are the registered speakers. We'll start with Andrea Smith, 10110B.
Andrea E. Smith, 102 Land of Road. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you again for taking the time to hear the plight of the neighbors in the historic Lanark regarding 10110B Road. You have all patiently sat through many months of our group outlining the precarious effects and long-term ramifications in our neighborhood resulting from aggressive infilling and constant loss of open space, overcrowding, traffic and congestion, environmental impacts, cost of living increase, and the drop in property values through the permanent alteration-- excuse me, of Lanark's character and charm. However, perhaps the most important issue that stands before us now is the clear and present deed restriction on the property at 10110B, as well as the controlling ordinance-- zoning ordinance 182-106C, which is unique and in part, in part to help maintain a certain aesthetic appropriate to each neighborhood within the township. Specifically for Lanark, it ensures cohesiveness to the original 1904 Lanark subdivision, with each deed carefully outlining restrictions and requirements, not leaving room for ambiguity or interpretation. The Planning Commission has also recognized by way of their recommendation the significance of these two critical factors, as well as additional aesthetic and utilitarian requirements. Their thought-- their thorough, thought-out, and well-executed recommendation show the valuable role they play in proper oversight of planning, development, and aesthetic requirements for the township, as well as those unique to such a singular neighborhood as Lanark, further creating consistency and cohesion in Lanark. Based on this and many aforementioned factors, we would like to respectfully encourage all of you to unanimously pass the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding 10110B Road. As you can see from the overwhelming support shown here, month after month, at the Commissioners' meetings, I believe it is important for all of you to know, we didn't just fall in love with our homes, we fell in love with the neighborhood, and that is how its community really comes to be, how it really solidifies, how it goes from a bunch of houses to a place people want to live and want to give back to and want to share in. We are not just a bunch of houses. We are not just a neighborhood. We are a thriving community of dedicated neighbors, trying to protect our neighborhood, not just for ourselves, but for the next generation. I'm deeply inspired and humbled to stand before you today in representation of that. Commissioners, you have all been so generous with your time. The residents of Lanark cannot thank you enough for the constant service you provide our township and to your respective wards. We eagerly look forward to your leadership on this issue and ultimately a positive decision in support of the Planning Commission. Thank you so much.
I just want to remind everyone, we have, we have a lot of people here, so I'm going to hold you to the three-minute rule. Andrew did a great job there with staying to three minutes. So, I just want to remind everybody, we've got to stay to three minutes. A lot of people want to talk tonight. Tony Van Veen?
Tony Van Veen, 3010B Road. I'm well aware that in a situation like this, with regard to 10110B, that you, the Commissioners, have many, many factors to weigh: legal parameters, codes, and other regulations, recommendations from a number of committees, all the while hoping to keep your constituents' wishes in mind. For me, those matters are important, absolutely, because they ultimately decide the outcome of the vote tonight. However, it is also a much more personal matter. For months now, I, from my house, have been looking out at a barren lot across from my house. 10110B has been demolished, and the character of our neighborhood has been irreversibly altered. For me, this is not a matter merely deciding whether to permit one house or two. It's a matter of figuring out what can be done to restore as much as possible the character of Lanark to what it was before 10110B was torn down. After tonight's decision, whatever that decision would be, I would hope that Mr. Fuller and Mr. Ryan will act rationally and in their own self-interest, and that if the ruling is that one house is allowed, they'll build one large house in the character of the neighborhood to ensure that they can get the highest sale price possible. I can't be sure that they will act in their self-interest, or in the interest of the neighborhood, however. And so, so my concern is that if the splitting of the lot is permitted, and you follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, that they would build one house on one lot, and the other lot would remain vacant, and hoping to hold out for a larger house, for a second house to be built there eventually. If that second house will not be allowed to happen, we, the Lanark residents, will be stuck with one small, out-of-character house in our neighborhood bordered by an empty lot forever. That is certain to ruin my day, and, in fact, it's certain to ruin every single day as long as I live on 10B Road, not to mention that it will bring down my property value. So, what I ask of you is to weigh all the facts. If you believe you have a legally defensive position to deny the splitting of the lot, please do so in the interest of preserving the character of the neighborhood. If, however, you believe absolutely that you must allow the lot to be split, then, with some trepidation, I will ask you to please follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission and allow only one house on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jean Angel? I guess, yeah, yeah, sure. Substituting for Jean is her husband, Sam.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I, too, am grateful for the service that this board provides the community. Thank you for your many hours and time and deliberation. I echo what Tony Van Veen says, my neighbor and friend says. I'm going to say it a little differently, though. I think the Planning Commission's decision was a good start, but I think it's not a simple answer, what the Planning Commission provided. If there's only one house to be allowed on the lot, well, then, why are we splitting it and getting two deeds? Doesn't make sense. It's not simple. It's complicated. It's complicating things. But to me, the simple answer is deny the request. The request has been made for a subdivision for two lots, has been made for two houses. I would request that you deny it so that that one lot stays there, and so that there's only one house there, and so that we know that going forward. Thank you very much.
Catherine Miller? We'll skip over. Dale Nessler? Is Dale out there? Oh, he's not speaking. Okay. Stacy O'Leary? Okay. Dr. Levin?
I have additional copies of this available for you as well, and if necessary, I'll put them up on my website. This is about stormwater issues. I'd like to tell you that this is something that could affect you in the same way that it has, is going to affect me. My name is Michael Levin. I live at 414 Mill Road in Havertown. I'm a 25-year resident of the community, and I became acquainted with the fact that there were flooding issues in Havertown Township because a nearby community was experiencing them. That nearby community was in Woodmere Park, on Ridgeway particularly, and Woodmere Way. The purpose of this presentation is going to be short. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. You can read that for yourself afterward, but it concerns residential flooding, which occurs in a community which is several blocks distant from our own, and for which notification of this flooding issue coming to the fore did not appear to be presented to those who might be impacted. That's why you should be interested in this. There are flooding issues in Woodmere Park and Ridgeway because the site is in a bowl. The site is in lowland. It is, it is practically impervious to rainfall and moisture. That is, if you were to place a cup of water on that, it would take a half, it would take an hour for it to penetrate a half an inch. Soils in Havertown are made land. Next, I'd like to indicate to you that there is hazard mitigation reports which are prepared every five years. 2011 was the first report, was the, was the last report. 2016 is now in progress. The townships that are involved in Delaware County submit material to the Delaware County Planning Commission, which has a resource arm that meets to discuss them, to see whether they are serious, whether they are within the range of what the township experiences or not. For Woodmere Park and Ridgeway, low cost has been one of the factors that has been important.
I'm sorry, Dr. Levin, I'm going to have to cut you off. We have, we have to stay to three minutes.
You're, I'd like you to give me a chance to finish up, please.
You got 30 seconds. Let's finish up. We have a lot of people who would like to--
Engineer did not specify the type of pipe. These go into a formula, and whether the pipe is concrete, steel, or corrugate makes a difference. This community is old, the old facility. The storm grades have not been updated. The stormwater should be kept within the flooding area rather than take the problem to somewhere else and someone else. If the problem is solved within the lower part of the community, it is likely, where it is flooding, it is likely that the landowners will have greater confidence in the solution than something which is, oh, the water is coming from upgrading, so we just stop with upgrading. Meanwhile, you're sitting in your home at the next rainfall and saying, I wonder if it's going to make it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Dr. Levin, I'm going to--
Finally, this township does not have a planning department. They abandoned the planning department in 1970, the late 1970s. This makes a difference. It means that the Commissioners are making their decision themselves. The Planning Committee does not make that decision. I would endorse the idea of having a planning department. And finally, precise--
Please, come on.
Precise calculations are necessary, and those were not included.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you very much.
Copies of the report are available for you, and if you need more, you will get Copies of the report are available for you, and if you need more, you will get them.
Thank you, Doctor. I'm sorry, a lot of people want to speak tonight, and we have to move on. On, anything on agenda items, as with the registered speaker, on agenda items? Anyone want to speak in this row, first row? Doctor?
...chance to speak on this?
Yeah, yeah.
John Williams, 730 Pan Mure Road. I want to thank all of the commissioners for all the attention that they have put into the Pan Mure Road question. It's extremely complex, and I really appreciate all of the time that you've put into that. I think that each of you understands how committed I am to this and how I will persevere. It may end tonight, it may not. I would just ask the commissioners to think very carefully about the issues of illegal taking, of unpaid damages, and of trespass if the current status quo is allowed to remain. And finally, I would ask the commissioners to just consider, is it an effective use of township resources to, you know, to oppose something like this when someone is trying to protect their own private property? I know the record is closed, but I just wanted to pass these out. I understand they won't be officially part of the record, but we just completed the survey today. It does prove what we've said all along, that the public use has never been to 24 feet. And there's a description of, for my particular property, the, what is essentially the property which is being taken if the status quo is allowed to stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Anyone else in that row? Second row? Okay, third row? And the fourth row? Anyone standing over here? No? Outside? No one outside? Okay, first row.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Finta McQ. I'm here on behalf of Rick Fuller and Rick Fuller Homes. There's been a lot said, I know you're very familiar with the application. There's been a lot said specifically about Rick and his, what he's done to the property, and that he's demolished a historic home and so forth. And I know Rick is ready to finally clear the air a little bit on that this evening. But I just wanted to address two points. First is that Rick is absolutely in favor of keeping the aesthetic character of that beautiful Lanark neighborhood consistent. He has, he's built homes there before. They're beautiful homes. Mario, I think, has been through them and can attest to that fact, and the homes that he's proposing are even more beautiful than the ones he's put up. They're modeled after the prior home that was on the property and a home that's directly across the street, and he has nothing but positive things to do for this neighborhood. And I know the neighborhood is concerned about the fact that there's two homes proposed there, but the point is basically that there's two lots there. I know it's been referred to as one lot all the time, but there are two lots there. There were two lots on the original subdivision, and all we're doing is moving the existing lot line so that it was, they were linear lots, now they're going to be more square lots. That's all we're asking for, and it's essentially a buy-right plan with the one exception of the waivers for the cartway, just so that they stay consistent with what they are. So it's, again, a buy-right plan. And the second point I wanted to make about the conditions, the Planning Commission did a very good job in analyzing things, and we don't have a problem really with the conditions, with the exception, there was initially two exceptions. The deed restriction issue, we think, is properly an issue for the Court of Common Pleas in Delaware County. There's a pending lawsuit in the Court of Common Pleas about that issue, and we think that is the venue legally that should be determining that issue. But we're okay with the deed restriction condition that's been drafted. We're willing to live with that. The one thing that Rick cannot live with, and we certainly don't want to be involved in any kind of an appeal over the architectural condition, aside from the legality of the architectural condition and imposing those kind of standards on the approval, the condition is problematic in that, right now, we're tied up in a lawsuit that could take, he's got all Rick's funds tied up into it. He's just a single builder, and that, you know, as lawsuits go and lawyers can attest, these things can take years. And if he wants to go and build one house, it's going to be tough, frankly, to meet the architectural standards that he wants. He wants to build the nicer homes, but if they bleed him to death in court for two years, it will be, unfortunately, the neighbors opposing him that would prevent that, but it's an issue of feasibility, really. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, anyone else in this row?
Yes.
Okay.
Rick Fuller, 101 Temby Road. For the past six months, I've sat back quietly and let members of the opposition speak their minds. I respectfully waited until my property was actually on the agenda to address you. I've been repeatedly slandered at township meetings and to social media through the use of signage and in person. This very small group has been very vocal, but they are not the majority. A small handful of activists mostly consist of people whose deeds are not the same as mine, as they claim. My wife Christine, along with my daughter and niece, have made an effort to knock on practically every door in Lanark. They were surprised to see that the vast majority were in favor of this subdivision, even though most of them have been speaking up publicly, some of which include the owners of the property right next door, the three houses directly across the street on Temby Road, and the house directly across the street on Beaulieu. Several of them have been living here for decades and are aggravated by the tension that has been created in the neighborhood by Andrea Smith, who has only been a resident here for a little over a year. These same people show me their support every time I'm at the 101 Temby property, whether I'm shoveling snow or just passing through, and they express their desire to see two beautiful homes put where the lot is now. The opposition said the whole reason for their fight was to stop demolition of a home that they called historic was actually a very neglected home. It had knob and tube wiring, all the original systems needed, over $100,000 in exterior work, over 100 windows needed to be replaced, extensive structural damage, and an estimated total repair of $350,000. Now that the lots are vacant, this local minority has changed their argument from saving a beautiful home to we don't want two homes there. During the last Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Rhodes, Commissioner member, aired a few points to the crowd before the commission took its vote. He stated the Planning Commission cannot make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners based on private matters such as deed restrictions, and that they were not authorized to make the aesthetics of a house a contingency for subdivision. However, the recommendation included both as contingencies for approval of building the second house. Fortunately, at the Shade Tree Commission meeting, a township official spoke up to remind the commission that they were obligated to make their recommendations based on the merits of the plans in front of them. I appreciate that township official for stepping up and hope the commissioners today base its decision on the merits of the subdivision plans and not on some private restriction, which is a matter for courts to decide. To not approve this buy-right subdivision plan and to deny or make contingent in construction of a second house, you're opening a can of worms you'll never be able to close. Every time a builder even drives through Haver Town, the commissioners will be swarmed with activists trying to have them thrown out. This being the same builders who, over the past few years, have brought hundreds of thousands of dollars in new tax revenues to this township. Over the past two and a half years, I've built three new homes in Haver Town and have addressed and have added $52,698 to the township's annual tax revenues. It's almost over. I haven't spoken in six months.
I'll give you 30 seconds. Go ahead.
I've tried very hard, I've tried very hard to bring in two homes that will fully complement the existing characteristics of the neighborhood, using many features that are close proximity homes in our construction, and are expected to sell between $725,000 and $750,000. This will benefit the values of all surrounding homes in the area, regardless of what the few naysayers may believe. However, if forced to build one home, economic restraints will prohibit me from building anything remotely close to what I intended, and I'll be forced to construct a lower-budget house that will not fit into the scheme of the neighborhood the way I had hoped. This is by no means meant to be taken as a threat, but simply economic situation that will be posed upon me. I've been working in this township for 25 years. I started as a drywall contractor, working for many of the homeowners and builders in this area. 10 years ago, I started buying distressed homes in Haver Town and Ardmore. In most of the cases, I was able to save the houses, rehab them, and sell them to new families. This is only the second house I've ever had to tear down, and really wish there was another way I could have done it, but there wasn't. I've built three other beautiful homes, all on Park Road, which completely complement the houses surrounding them. The most recent two have sold for $625,000 and $650,000 respectively.
I'm sorry.
One more sentence.
Okay, go ahead.
Two more sentences. It is...
Come on, come on, let's go. Get it out, get it out.
Keep saying "finally" over and over, and we'll be all right.
Finally. I take complete pride in what I do, and each house is unique unto itself. There are builders out there who continuously throw up the same old cheap house trying to maximize their profits. I am not one of these builders. Mario Oliva has even been through a few of these homes, so he can attest to that fact. I ask that this board issue a decision that deals with the merits of the subdivision itself without adding conditions that relate to construction. Adding architectural contingencies or deed restriction contingency would only cause the township to be a defendant in an appeal process, forcing the taxpayers of Haverford Township to foot the bill for a case that really should be pursued by this minority group. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in this row? Okay.
I have a speech prepared, but I will not read it because I feel like I'll be cut off. So, thank you for your time. I'm Stacy Ryan, I'm at 534 Cathmere Road, and I would like to talk to you guys about community. I've heard a lot about community, about the beautiful Lanark neighborhood, and I would like to challenge everybody to say that our community is Haver Town, which is made up of Lanark, of Oakmont, of Penfield, of Brookline, of many, many, many other little neighborhoods, and they all have their respective charms, and nobody in this room wants to take those charms away. What we all do want to do in this room, in my opinion, is boost the economy of Haver Town, boost the economy of our community, right? And that takes people working together, and that's not what I have seen, that is not what I have heard from the small group of people who are challenging my friend, and, you know, my husband's a realtor, so yes, he's my friend, and I know what work he does. He does good work, and, you know, I feel bad for him. I feel bad that he has been personally attacked. Am I upset that my husband has also been personally attacked? Yes, I am. And I think, you know, you saying that the undue harm will come to the community, I wonder what that really is, because in my mind, new developments brings money to our community, money with which we fund our schools, money with which we fund, I don't know, I guess Boy Scouts is a nonprofit, but, you know, we take care of our children. We give them plaques when they do things that are important and stand out, you know? And I'm a proud mother, I'm a teacher, and I teach tolerance, respect, resiliency, and I don't see any of that from this group that calls themselves the Lanark Advocacy Group. I wonder who you're advocating for, because it's not my community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else in this row? The second row? Anyone in the second row? In the third row?
David Berman, and I represent the citizens that are opposed to 101 Temby. I certainly have, and I hope not today, anything that's been personally offensive to Mr. Fuller or to Mr. Ryan. I will say, and I think it's important for the board to know, that from the very beginning, the neighbors have been upfront with respect to their desire to do two things. One, maintain the character of the neighborhood, yes, prevent the destruction of an historic property, which they sought to have certified and just missed it. And second, to ensure that the deed restrictions, not just for 101 Temby, but throughout the neighborhood, are honored. These go back to 1908. Many of them have the same deed restrictions, and to that end, filed the lawsuit back in November with notice long before the closing that that was going to happen. In terms of fairness, the neighbors have been fair all along as to their intentions, and all they are looking to do is to enforce that which they are subject to in their own deeds, many of them. That suit was brought in November. It's been amended in January and involves 13 separate named plaintiffs, seven properties, all of whom seek to enforce the deed restriction. The Planning Commission did an excellent job in hearing the arguments. Solicitor Byrne took legal memorandum from Mr. McQ and myself, and I think with staff, the commission, and legal counsel struck the right balance. So I'm here to say thank you to the effort put in by staff and the Planning Commission. We request that you adopt the resolution as is, and we want to respect the plans. Are the plans and the conditions well thought out, and we ask that the resolution not be amended. Thank you.
Anyone else in the third row? Fourth row?
Brian Elias, 101 Land Ave Road. I'm on the same block as 101 Temby. The notion that because the word deed restrictions appears in the zoning ordinance, that we're now going to take, that the commission or the township might take deed restrictions and make them part of what you can and cannot do on a property, seems difficult, and I just hope the township thinks that through. If, for example, this subdivision is denied because the deed says only one home on these two lots, are we going to start tearing homes down? Is it, does the deed restrict, pardon me, does the zoning law say, it was only here because a group of people brought it to your attention? They did a great job, and they're well-intent, and I really don't care which way it goes, but how does the township going forward now make sure, okay, whenever there's two lots, are we going to ask the builder to give us all the deeds, certify they're accurate, hire our own lawyer and review them? Are we going to go back and start tearing homes down? I'm not saying one way or the other, but this is not a one-off. If this subdivision is denied because of a deed restriction, which, I don't really care, it's not a one-off. It's going to have huge, you know, everyone always says, the precedent, precedent. This is going to be precedent. So I just hope there's guidance for that going forward, and thought about what you can do to two homes that are on what was previously a deed that said one home. So, thank you.
Excuse me, sorry for stepping out of line, but I didn't realize what protocol was.
No, no, go ahead, come on.
Ready, set, go. I'm David Richards, and I live at 208 East Park Road. I am married to Janice Richards. I have one child at Drexel University and one in Delaware County Christian School for High School. We've lived in Lanark for the last 15 years, having purchased one of the newer-built homes back in 1999, 2000. We are not for or against the builder. However, we are not happy with the vacant 101 Temby property and ask the commissioners to rule based on precedents and to take into consideration current code and laws that need to be upheld. We are of the belief that our opinion is simply that, an opinion. Our opinion is no more valid than the numerous negative opinions made in public forum about the newer homes and how they devalue the older existing homes in the neighborhood. I'm happy to convey that we have exactly what we were looking for and paid for, a newer home in a beautiful neighborhood. I believe that the neighborhood is no less beautiful because of my home or any of the other newer homes built recently. As for 101 Temby, I had the chance, like others, to buy the property and maintain its presence in the neighborhood. We chose not to open our checkbook and are confident that the commissioners will do what is fiduciarily responsible and will vote based on what is best for the township. Please do not allow the example of Maniunk to sway your stance. I am a business owner in Maniunk that deals daily with the realities of the Maniunk Neighborhood Council and their constant pursuit to block any progress or change. I am an elected member of the Maniunk Development Corporation and Maniunk Special Services District Boards. These boards work to effect change and bring positive progress into the Maniunk District. Please allow me to use the beauty of our neighborhood as a slight segue. I'm asking the commissioners to consider what can be done about the hideous yellow signs, also known as the, say, 101 Temby signs. These signs serve the purpose, and again, in my opinion, only serve to devalue the perceived value of the residences in our neighborhood. Said another way, I believe these signs scream loudly to potential buyers that there's a problem in this neighborhood, and it is larger than the multitude of signs displayed. My question would be, should some time limitation be considered for such displays in the future? Whatever the outcome of 101 Temby ruling, I would ask that reasonable consideration is given to the damage these signs are causing to the potential sale values of any homes in the neighborhood. Lastly, in anticipation of what might... Lastly, in anticipation of what might lie ahead, we would oppose any limitations placed on homeowners based on historical significance. We would oppose any additional costs associated with historical considerations being placed on our residents. We do not want or need any additional levels of government control placed on homeowners for improvements, permits, et cetera. I would ask the advocacy group to be careful what they ask for in that regard. One request might be that any limitations placed on homeowners based on historical considerations might not include the newer homes in the neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns. The Landark Advocacy Group does not speak for the entire neighborhood. We are hoping that Landark can remain a neighborhood about the people in residence, not about the residences that the people reside in. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect, excellent. Nice job, Dave. Anyone else? Okay, come on up.
I'm Barbara Lind and I live at one of the new houses. And I did speak up at one other meeting.
Just give us your address.
Barbara Lind, L-I-N-D. I live at 32 East Park Road. I live at one of the new houses. And I'm just here to say I really have enjoyed it. And I don't feel like we devalue the neighborhood in any way with a beautiful home. Rick did a great job all the way through. I was very happy with it, I'm still very happy with it. I felt happy to live in a neighborhood, in a new house. I'm not, I'm not good at redoing older homes and so I felt fortunate. So all this is, you know, it's sad and it's unsettling. But I just attest to the fact that he, he built a very nice house that I'm enjoying living in, so thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. On most, everything was about 101 Temby.
Yeah, everything on, on.
And we'll, the board is going to.
The only other thing was Dr. Levin on the flooding. The only thing that I'll, if you want, I can make a comment on the flooding. I mean, the flooding that Dr. Levin is referring to, has been referring to, is times when the community sustains a large amount of rain in a short period of time. When those incidents occur, there are multiple locations throughout Havertford Township as well as throughout Delaware County. And these occur when, it's the same thing as if you have a brand-new sink and you pour five gallons of water in the sink all the time. There's nothing wrong with our storm source system. It's not defective. It was built according to the specs, unfortunately, when these incidents occur. However, there are multiple incidents throughout the township when these, when these large volume of water, the flooding events occur. The township has been, will continue. Myself and Mr. Pennoni and the rest, the rest of the staff are preparing a DCED grant as well as we were looking at future capital funds to make some infrastructure changes. And there'll be more discussions on flooding as the months go by.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and on 101 and on Panmure, we'll be discussing that. The board will be discussing that later. Now moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting of February 9th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded? I'm sorry, who's second? Jimmy. I'm sorry, Commissioner McGarrett.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Heilman.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Number seven, approval warrants.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the following warrant. Warrant number three of 2015 totaling $3,359,342.51, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for February 12th, 2015 in the amount of $619,427.39. The general and sewer fund payroll for February 26th, 2015 in the amount of $666,279.08. I wish we spent another thousand there. General fund disbursements number three, 2015 in the amount of $1,426,086.48. Sewer fund disbursement number three of 2015 in the amount of $566,954.53. Community development block grant fund disbursement number three of 2015 in the amount of $31,607.13. Home grant fund disbursement number three of 2015 in the amount of $7,396. Capital projects fund disbursement number three of 2015 in the amount of $36,133.17 on a credit card statement ending February 6th, 2015 in the amount of $5,458.73.
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
Mr. President, our township auditor has raised any questions with our finance director. The finance director has answered his questions and any other questions to our satisfaction. I recommend that these be approved.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, I just wanted to wait for Commissioner D'Amelio.
I think we can go without him.
Okay.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Heilman.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Number eight, petition to vacate Panmure Road.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the petition for the vacation of Panmure Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded? Any discussion?
Well, personally, I guess I'll step up and speak. I mean, I, I know the residents want something up there done. I'm not sure all of them are behind the vacation at this point. I, I know there is either a speeding problem or a perceived speeding problem. I'm still working with the police from Lower Marion, from Havertford Township, with the codes department to come up with alternative types of traffic control since the road is not fit for speed humps. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying, I guess, is I, I don't feel this is a private road. So, there are public streetlights, public sewer, we pave it, we plow it. People drive on it. It's been going on for 100-plus years. So, you know, my, my position is no to vacate on the road and yes to do something to help them with the, you know, the speed issues. So I'll continue to work with the police and continue to work with the residents, continue to work with Lower Marion and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. President? I would just like to say that I, I'd like to thank the participants and all the time that you've put in. I, I know that this has been a tremendous amount of work for everyone involved. And I want you to know that it's, all of us here have a, to everyone in the audience, we have an enormous amount of respect. We're all homeowners, we're all property owners. We have a tremendous amount of respect for everyone in this community that is, you know, a business owner, a property owner, and for your concerns about your street and all of your neighborhoods. These votes are not taken lightly. We have worked hard and thought a lot about everything that happens, always do, everything that comes before us. I'd like to see some things happen on Panmure Road that would be acceptable to the residents. And I think we shall endeavor to try and do something to that end. That's all I have.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
No.
Mr. Siegel.
I'm recused. And Mr. Siegel did submit a written recusal motion earlier. Or not motion, notice. Notice.
Mr. Heilman.
No to vacate.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. McGarrett.
No.
Mr. Wexler.
No.
Mr. Connell.
No.
And Mr. Oliva.
No.
Okay. Number nine, ordinance number P-16, 2014.
Mr.
You got it.
Okay. Mr. President, this is the second ward, correct?
It's, it's two different.
It's multiple wards.
Yeah, it's multiple, yep.
Yeah, it's a second reading.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, this is the grind.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-16, 2014 by reclassifying the zoning classification of certain properties known as Delaware County Folio number 22-02-00651-00 and 22-02-00652-00 and 22-02-0065300 and 22-02-00705-00. From this institutional district to R4 low to medium density residential district, Delaware County Folio number 22-02-0065001 from institutional district to outdoor recreation and open space district, Delaware County Folio number 22-03-0026400 and 22-03-0026500 from institutional district to R4 residential district and Delaware County Folio number 22-03-0095810 from R5 residential district to ROS outdoor recreation and open space district.
Second.
Did I mention?
Only this stuff after motion, all right? Yeah.
Zero.
All right. Any discussion? All right, this is the second reading, so, yeah, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Heilman.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Again, for the reasons articulated at the last meeting for one specific property, no.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Number 10, ordinance number P-1, 2015.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-1, 2015 by amending chapter 182, zoning section 105. Zoning map to rezone Delaware County tax parcel numbers 22-0, correction, 22, 25, 136, 000 and 22, 25, 135, 000. And commonly known as 801 North Eagle Road and 805 North Eagle Road, respectively, a legal description of which is set forth in this ordinance from R5 low to medium residential district to LIN light industrial district.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on this. This isn't my ward and this is basically taking the two properties at 801 and 805 and tearing those down to make a parking lot there. And I have to comment on the YMCA because the YMCA, as far as I'm concerned, as far as some of the neighbors are concerned over there, has done a good job. And I commend them for the work that they've done. Michael has done, Michael Trope has done a good job and I've been out with them to a few of the different places with the Y's. And basically, they are going to make improvements along the walkway there. They've agreed to move some things around. They've agreed to put a bunker in for the gentleman that lives there on Lawrence Road. But because of the reason of taking the two homes down, I, I would vote against it myself. But I want to say that the Y is a good neighbor.
Thank you, Commissioner McGarrett.
I just want to make very clear, since you used the word twice, you did say taking and I want to make sure everybody understands there is no governmental taking that's going on right here. The YMCA has purchased these properties in arms-length transactions and is just asking us to reclassify the zoning. Just, that's such a loaded word in real estate law. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah. Mr. Holmes is a lawyer. And what he means, what he means there is they are going to purchase two homes to take them down. So, it's just a difference in the way we do things here. So, thank you very much.
Okay. All right.
We had, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we had a, I, I thought we had a pretty healthy discussion on this at the, at the work session. And I appreciate Commissioner McGarrett's comments about the Y and I think the YMCA has, has, has been a good neighbor and I think they've been a great addition to the township. There was concern expressed in that meeting about, you know, what people referred to as creeping commercialism. And I, I just, I have to say that every one of our business districts is always going to have that house that's on the edge of that business district. And, you know, the fortunate thing here is we're talking about the only two homes on Eagle Road. There is going to be a buffer between it and the first home on Lawrence Road. I think to the extent that people can have, you know, get any comfort out of that, I, I hope that they do. I don't believe that this is going to be the start of some domino where we're going to be purchasing homes up and down Lawrence Road to, to expand the YMCA. It, it has planned on getting these, on purchasing these houses. It is, and I think it's done everything it's promised to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may point a clarification, how many parking spaces do they anticipate? Can you let the public know that again? Or did we know that?
Thirty, I think it was.
Wasn't it thirty, Mike?
I'm sorry. Mike, can you answer that question? Can you, can you come up and answer that question? Just so we get you on the.
Michael Trope, 225 Old Wilmington Road, Coatesville, Pennsylvania. The boat lots will net about 30 parking spaces.
Okay. All right.
I, I just have concerns that that's not going to be enough considering the amount of people that have joined the Y. I expressed that concern in our work session. I also stated that, I mean, although the Y has been a good neighbor, the traffic issues there are horrendous. I don't know how that's going to solve it. This is a real concern. I have a real concern about what's going on here.
Is, is anything being done with the intersection of Lawrence and Eagle Road that will possibly help some of the traffic issues? Is it going to be widened at all through this process or?
Lori can speak to that.
Yeah, that's who I would like to speak, actually. Going to say her name, but.
Her hand fell asleep.
Didn't want to put her on the spot.
The original sketch that we received from the Y, as a matter of fact, did not include some of the lane improvements that we are coercing from the Y with the acquisition of these two properties. There were intersection improvements that were proposed as part of the original development that included the replacement of this traffic light at Lawrence and Eagle Road. It was to be stepped back. We were to modify the radius on the turn and we were going to tie the two lights, the new light at the Y entrance and this light together so that they would be better coordinated. That work was not done because there was a pause to see whether this got any legs. And it did. Both of the properties are under agreement of sale. We're looking to move the curb line back somewhat to better define the, the turning movements and get a few more cars through that intersection and, and hopefully help improve the long queues.
A few more cars going towards this, this direction?
Oh, let's say in the afternoon, it's definitely towards the Blue Route. And, yeah.
I have concerns about the turning lane, the right-hand turning lane where the hamburger place is. What will happen with that?
That would be, we hope to be able to, and maybe Dave can step into this conversation, to elongate that turn, add a little bit of length to that right turn queue, do a better job of striping it. As you know, there was some work done with the utilities recently and in part because of the Y and in part there was just a main replacement project. And when the road was restored, the lane painting was not properly restored. So we have some work to do. We can do some maintenance work this spring before this even gets underway.
We went through hearing after hearing with the Y before they came there. We had traffic studies. This wasn't foreseen, the potential growth and the way this, the traffic has been a nightmare. I know Commissioner Siegel and I, especially Commissioner Siegel, has talked about the traffic and pedestrians cross. traffic and pedestrians crossing that area.
Well, there certainly are additional traffic improvements that are not completed related to the original Y. Again, a lot of those things was put on pause, the first phase was to do the improvements at the entrance. Then there was some additional work as part of the lease, there's a fixed dollar amount of off-site traffic improvements as required by PennDOT to be completed. Those things are not fully, were not fully fleshed out because we now had this new configuration with the two lots, so that would include some work that wasn't originally proposed to PennDOT to widen the road.
It's also worth noting, the light that's now in front of the YMCA is the first light and crosswalk we've ever had anywhere on the Eagle Road business corridor from Eagle Road all the way to Darby, and is the only safe place to cross the street, otherwise.
Right, I was going to bring that up. How, I mean, that light, from an interest, I guess, an engineering standpoint, Dave, has that, it's helped with pedestrians crossing there, but what about the traffic? I mean, have we, and the other point, I guess I want to make, and this is all traffic issues that I'm concerned about, so the light, have, have we've had a lot of tickets in that area with, from the police of vehicles going through the lights there?
I don't know about enforcement. I don't know what happened.
That's right, that's probably right.
Let me just clarify a little bit what Laurie said. Laurie's right, there's, there's required improvements at the Lawrence and Eagle intersection that were put on hold pending the resolution of these two properties. If these two properties go forward, it provides more flexibility in making those improvements, in particular to the lane configurations. Commissioner D'Amelio, on your, your question about in which direction would it help the traffic, all directions, because anytime you can move left through an intersection, which is what these, what the improvements would help to facilitate left turns, you can get, you can get cars and automobiles through the intersection more efficiently. So, what we really struggle with at that intersection is the left, the other thing we're really struggling with is the timing between Hillcrest and Lawrence Road. Frankly, I think that's the biggest problem right now there. That was put on hold too.
Mike is just complaining about, that's a real issue.
I think that's the biggest thing. Now, by the way, that's designed and permitted, again, those improvements get done with the improvements at the Lawrence and Darby intercept, Lawrence and Eagle intersection. So, Commissioner D'Amelio, they go in with that. So, right now, I think the biggest problem, it sounds like you're hearing the same thing, is those two signals are not timed as well as they're going to be timed.
So, once they're timed, and again, I'm sorry, I just want to get some of my questions answered, and some of the residents have expressed, you know, some of these concerns. Once those two lights are timed, from those two lights to the light here, what will the traffic be? I mean, will it be much faster coming through these Eagle Road to Darby, will it be much faster, is that what you're saying?
Nothing's going to happen, you're not, you're not going to, you're not interconnected from Eagle Road and Hillcrest to this triangle up here. This triangle up here is a whole different issue, in fact.
Yeah.
All right, so just, so just.
Out of here and this triangle, here's.
Absolutely, I'm not saying that. So, just Eagle Road and, I'm sorry, just Hillcrest and Lawrence.
Eagle Lawrence is going to get, is going to operate much more efficiently. I think, I think, frankly, from even using it, one of the worst things we're having is, is the coordination between the signal turning at Hillcrest, the signal turning at Lawrence, we don't empty the queue at Lawrence before that signal comes through Hillcrest, and those rights coming out of Hillcrest the other direction are really causing some problems, we're talking kind of about that. It all, and there's a little bit of devil in the detail, Commissioner D'Amelio, but it all comes together with the connection of the two intersections, and if, if it goes forward, the modification of the geometry of that intersection. What we got to do, we got to get those two queues out of there, we got to get the queue going towards Westchester Pike out before Hillcrest opens up, and then we got to get the Hillcrest queue out before the Lawrence Road intersection opens up.
And if it's not approved, what then?
Well, if it's not approved, let me back up, if those modifications aren't made to the intersection geometry lines, it goes with what PennDOT's already requiring, which is the signals get modified, the signals get interconnected, which is very important, and then the timing between the two get better. So, it's not like it's, if nothing happens here, it just doesn't stay where it is, what's already required by PennDOT gets implemented.
And, to make the point, once the YMCA is able to purchase these properties, then we can negotiate about actually going into these properties to be able to expand these lanes.
Right, right now it's private property that neither attached it nor the Y has any access to.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner?
Thank you. I mean, I just want to raise two things. I mean, I think the public has to understand that what we're doing is trying to make a difficult situation a little less difficult, the timing of the lights is going to help, but unless you eliminate volume, you know, it's, it's a practical matter, those areas are difficult, and with, and this, I think the striping issue and the coordination are the two biggest issues we face there because you have cars going in every which lane and a very short straight, straight lane from Lawrence, from Eagle toward Westchester Pike.
An anomaly on that whole street, frankly, at rush hour, whether it's, whether it's somebody getting in the wrong lane, somebody dropping off, double parking.
Yeah.
Causes the whole ripoff effect.
Right, and, because the lights back up at seven in the morning when I go to my office, the lights are backing up. I mean, the only thing that I see that can be difficult is at the peak times of the Y, and this is an enforcement issue because I don't know how the police do it, and I'm, is the cars who pull out into the Y and then block the intersection, but the last thing I want is a police car pulling anyone over on Lawrence Road or Eagle Road because they're already so congested it would block them, but there is a problem that that causes as well, and that's difficult. But I think the public has to also understand, my understanding is this property is going to be used for staff parking, which should have, I don't think it's great a frequency of people coming in and out as members, which will also.
That is staff parking?
Right.
Yes. I was under the assumption that.
And so, that's that, and because since our last meeting, I've been, you know, people call me about the traffic all the time, and I live it with my office on Eagle. The other thing that people have to understand is the tax implications of losing those for the township are approximately seven cents on average per house. So, we're not talking that the tax rolls are going to suddenly cost all of us, you know, a ton of money, we're talking anywhere between six and eight cents on the average home, some a little more, some a little less, but that's the average.
Okay.
And also a thing, Commissioner D'Amelio, this YMCA is still in the honeymoon period, it's got a huge membership, and that membership right now is excited about a new YMCA, but the traffic issues and more important, the parking issues, and your concern about there's never going to be enough capacity, that ultimately will come to an equilibrium. There are people who'll go to the YMCA even if they have to walk on their hands and knees there, but there are other people who only have to not find a parking space once, and they will never be back, and that's, that will ultimately come to an equilibrium. Now, I asked the people from the Y, am I lying? Yeah, they're all shaking their heads, no, they're not on camera, so. That's, and, and the issues we have in the Eagle Road Business Corridor, I'll remind you of something we talked about on this board in 2005, there are 65 cuts in the curb between Darby and now Hillcrest. The YMCA only has one entrance and one exit, but we have 64 more entrances and exits out of business on Eagle, on Eagle Road, so in the middle of any day.
I'm sorry, I want me to correct, there are two entrances and one exit.
Where are the two entrances?
There's one.
Early entrance, it's a back entrance.
Yeah, on the one side of the building.
Two entrance.
Okay.
It's two exits.
Two exits.
Okay.
No, there's two entrances and two exits.
Okay.
There's two exits.
I don't even know where the second ones are, and I go there, okay?
That's a problem.
But my point is, there's two exits and entrances out of the CVS and 64 other businesses on that stretch, so you've got people who are turning left into right-moving traffic, turning right into left-moving traffic, that until we come up with some comprehensive plan to get people to walk in that area and include at least one lighted crosswalk up closer to the CVS, we are never going to fix that problem, and I don't think it's fair to say it's the YMCA's problem, it's the township's problem.
I, I don't necessarily agree with you, I'm not saying it's their, I'm not saying it's their.
I would, I agree with Larry on that statement, but Larry's on a roll, so let's call the vote.
We'll be here all night. This could take a while.
Could I just make one statement? I would ask that the YMCA, and I know that you will do that, and you've been incredibly accommodating and trying to do just a great job contributing to this township, but I would ask that going forward, and I know you have thus far worked with the neighbors in terms of how this development comes to be so that it is acceptable and agreeable to them as they do, are contiguous to the library, and that we can look at, whether it be six months or a year from now, the membership that you have, and, and if it is, you know, if this particular YMCA is an anomaly and there's, you know, an unbelievable number of members that you've never seen before, that maybe, that that could be addressed at some point, just to reevaluate. That's, that's all. I do believe it will reach, reach an equilibrium on its own, and I do believe that all, all businesses do have that happen, but I think it's important for the neighbors and the traffic in that intersection that we all be aware and revisit periodically so that we can get the right answers.
And just so the YMCA doesn't worry about losing money, it's easier to stop going than it is to actually cut off the automatic payments that go to you every month.
This is true, this is true.
All right. One. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just want to, you know, we're, I don't think this should be perceived as the YMCA not cooperating. At last month's meeting, I made comments about dialogue, and the YMCA has agreed to send a representative to what will be a joint constituent meeting I'm holding in April with Kishner Hall for the neighbors to speak to the Y and to address those, it'll be on the 22nd in this room at 7:00. So, the Y, you know, was very agreeable to the dialogue, Michael contacted me right after the meeting, and we set that up so that the neighbors, particularly in the area of Hillcrest and all those who were, who have the traffic impacts, can, can, you know, can talk to the Y and address and get some answers and get some concerns directly from them, so that we're immediately responsive, and I appreciate that very much.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
All right, number 11, ordinance number P-3 2015. Commissioner Connell?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-3 2015 authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, and this is going to be just like the other one. Special purpose parking zone in front of 103 Juniper Road and in front of 2226 Brimar Avenue. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Amended to restrict parking on the west side of Darby Road from the north side of Police Station driveway to 80 feet in a northerly direction. No parking between signs would be installed in the amended location. Parking time limited. To rescind parking on Moen Road on the north side for two hours, ordinance number 2088, and establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Section 17591, Schedule 16. Restrict parking on Moen Road on the north side. And sticker parking only on the north side of Moen Road, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, entire length.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Before we move on to number 12, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Five minutes here. All right, let's.
Where are we?
Yeah, let's calm down. Session, we're, in session? Yeah, we're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-6 2015, further amending and supplementing Chapter 45 alarm systems.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any, any discussion? I'm sorry, who's seconded?
This is the amendment on alarms.
Chris, thank you. Mr. Connell?
I think we discussed this pretty well at the work session last week.
We did.
Okay, please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number 13, ordinance number P-7 2015.
Crest.
He's got Crest.
I don't know.
Crest?
Mr. President? Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-7 2015 establishing traffic restrictions on the following highway, special parking zone in front of 1004 Crest Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
I'm not sure where this resides.
There's any. Sure, somebody has to know.
Eighth ward.
Oh, it's in the eighth.
No, wait a minute, this is the one.
This is up in your, up the hill, Chris.
All right, Sarge. Can you talk about this, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
He's not going to know.
We can have discussion. Go ahead, come on up.
President that lives at 104, 1004 Crest, a veteran who's been, who's been disabled, and.
Just for handicap?
Yes, handicap parking.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm for it.
Got it, got it, Chris.
Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
It's Chris's birthday, yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes. Number 14, resolution number 1969 2015. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 1969 of 2015, authorizing transfers to be made between the accounts of the 2014 budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Just so people understand, what we have basically is changes in expenditures totaling $1,653,000, changes in revenues that match that, $1,653,000, changes in our sewer fund expenses of $93,000, and changes in our sewer fund revenue of $93,000. So, the numbers balance, and our finance director recommends that we make these transfers.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilmann?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Number 15, resolution number 1970 2015.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 1970 2015 approving the township of Haverford's 2015 fee schedule.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this was discussed at the work session, there are only a couple changes to the entire fee schedule, they are worth noting. Under non-residential and multifamily buildings, the cost of new construction, what was originally a $25 charge for the first $20,000 of cost, is now set at the first $40,000 of cost, but the price remains $25. $25. A similar $20,000 to $40,000 cost has, has done for the next, for the next $1,000 of cost over the 40, and that's $20. There is also changes to fire prevention fees from $50 to $75 in buildings up to 1,500 square feet, and a change from $75 to $100 in buildings between 1,500 square feet and 3,000 square feet. There are some changes in permit fees, and there are, and I believe that is it.
Okay.
And one slight change to definitions under our finance department with regard to tax certification fees that are $5.
Any other discussions?
I see.
Please call a roll. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva? Yes. Number 16, resolution number 1971-2015?
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution number 1971-2015 approving the township of Havreford 2000, 20,000, 2015, excuse me, professional consultant's fee schedule.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call a roll. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliva? Yes. Number 17, resolution number 1972-2015?
Mr. Chairman, I'll help you out here. To make a motion to adopt resolution number 1972-2015, approving the subdivision plan for Rick Fuller Homes LLC, 101 10B Road, Township of Havreford, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio number 22-02-01067-00, has been submitted to subdivide an existing 17,600-square-foot parcel into two 8,800-square-foot lots. The subject property is owned R4 Residential District and is located in the second ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by Catania Engineering Associates, Incorporated, Millmon Park, Pennsylvania, dated November 6, 2014, and last revised January 21, 2015.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Holmes?
President, could I ask Attorney McHugh something?
Before we, just for the record, before you do that?
Yes.
I've submitted a recusal statement to the, to Mr. Gentile.
Yes, I did forget. Yeah, sorry. I wanted to ask Attorney McHugh to clarify something that came up during the comments. Attorney Mc...
Can I just interrupt you for one quick second, too? This, I know there's some complicated issues here, and we had a little bit of a, a executive session beforehand. What I did want to remind everyone is that, and I'm not sure what's going to happen with Mr. McHugh here, but if there's any questions that need to be asked of me, we can always take another executive session. But we shouldn't be talking about what kind of legal advice you're given in, in the executive session, because that kind of defeats the whole purpose for an executive session.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McHugh, when I, when I heard your comments earlier about the, about the resolution that is before us now, I, I understood from you that in that resolution, to the extent that there are a number of points in it, you, you understood that point number four, which was the deed restriction, was something that was already before another judicial authority, and that you were not, you were not opposing that, but you were asking us to remove restriction number, condition number two from this resolution, which was the architectural elements described to the planning commission at its January 8, 2015 meeting shall be incorporated into the construction of any and all houses erected on the property. Now, I then did hear your client get up and speak, and it seemed like that wasn't consistent, but let me ask you as you're his attorney, is, is your position now that the deed restriction is in the court of common pleas and can stay there and is, does not need to be before us today?
Yes. I don't think either one of the, condition two and condition four belong in this resolution. The architectural elements I already addressed earlier, but they, as to the deed restriction issue, there's already a pending case in Delaware County. We have to wait for that case anyway, no matter what this, what the commissioners do. We, we have to, we can't put up a second building without actually winning that case anyway. So, I think it's a, it's redundant, it's unnecessary, and I think it, as Mr. Oliva has pointed out earlier, it can invite trouble when you're tying, tethering a subdivision approval to a court case, because it's, things can happen in the court case that you don't predict.
Okay. So, what I would, Mr. President, what I would like to do, I would like to ask, I would like to amend our resolution and ask the person who raised it and the person who seconded it to approve the resolution as amended, the motion of an amended resolution to remove condition number two to the, to this resolution.
I accept that change.
Condition number two, as I, I'm sorry, the architectural elements described to the planning commission at its January 8, 2015 meeting shall be incorporated into the construction of any and all houses erected on the property.
Well, my concern there is, I don't know, I haven't seen any specifics on these architectural elements. It's hard for me to make a decision to keep it in or remove it when I haven't seen anything. All I've seen is a picture, and a picture...
So, rendering, right?
A rendering, I'm sorry, rendering. Does not, does not allow me, I can't speak for the other board members, but I, it doesn't allow me to make an educated decision on what may be there. And the other, if, if we have the case that is pending right now, and, and if the deed restriction's upheld, then this is moot. So, it's hard for me to, to give you a vote on something that I... Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, I, that's why I think it doesn't belong in, in the, if there's going to be a subdivision approval conditioned on, and the construction of the second house was conditioned on us winning the court case, we have to go and win, win that court case anyway. And if we lose the court case, this is moot. But if, if, if we win the court case, or if something other result happens in the court case, whether, say, a settlement or something like that, this might be left unsatisfied. It might be an argument as to whether it's satisfied or not.
Well, and, and how can, how can it, I, I'm not comfortable removing it or leaving it in, because I don't know what it is.
On the architectural side?
Right.
Right, and that, there's another issue there. It, it, there was no formal record at the planning commission, there was no formal record really tonight where there's going to be appended. And, and even the architectural renderings, I think they were, they were...
Broad.
They were broad, and they were put together in a short period of time, where I think even since then, the, the location of the, where the garage will face has, has changed in, as part of the discussion in the planning commission. So, you know, when you, and when you get into things like building materials and sort of things like that, frankly, I think those kind of conditions and the architectural elements that are broadly referenced here, I don't think that's a, it's a subdivision issue. You know, really, we're just talking about, can we move the lot line from one spot to another? And, and I think we're, I just think it's, it's dangerous to get into tinkering with building materials, architectural elements, where the garage is going to face, and that kind of thing. I, it's really, it's a subdivision, so it, the issue is whether the lots comply. And there's plenty of specifics in, in engineering in the subdivision ordinance, and the plan is very specific. But when you get into that kind of detail, it's, it's dangerous. And that's, that's really the big problem we have, is that we don't want to be tied to that, where we don't know, especially with this unresolved court case, where Mr. Fuller might spend $100,000, hopefully not on my fees, but in time and lost money, and, and be unable, frankly, to build the houses, you know, if there's a condition that ties into these plans.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
My concern about number two is exactly your concern, which is it has no, there's no specifics to it, and this is a resolution that we have to pass. There's no, there's no record in the planning commission below of what these elements are or would be. And I don't, I believe that they're just aesthetic conditions that I think aren't appropriate coming from the planning commission, aren't appropriate for us to impose. And since we are imposing the deed restriction, you know, based upon all of our own understanding of, of what the law requires, it, it would seem now that the, the, the only issue of concern in this resolution, at least as far as I'm concerned, is this aesthetic element that's been added to it. And I have a problem with the aesthetic element to begin with, but number two, its lack of specificity, I have no way of describing, other than renderings we've seen, as what those specific architectural elements are. And that's why I've asked to amend the resolution.
I'm sorry. I believe those, the architectural specificities were brought out from, they were given to the planning commission. The planning commission didn't, didn't put those on, on them. So, the planning commission didn't say, well, we want the house this way, or that way, the other way. They were submitted by, by Rick Fuller Homes as part of their, their plan.
But, but the architectural rendering is just, it, it looks more like a conceptual drawing. I saw no mention in any of the stuff that I read...
Phil, I'm not arguing that.
With architectural materials or any of those things.
But in number two, what, what, what I'm saying is that in your, to your point, where you're saying that, that this doesn't belong here, well, it was, the planning commission didn't ask for these things to be put in here. Those were part of, those were brought to them voluntarily.
But the planning commission did not describe them with any specificity, and we have no record before us of what those are. And there's no way for us to determine, as a board right now, what those elements are, other than to ask people who were there. And to the extent that we get competing views of what these elements are, what constitutes an architectural element, what doesn't, we have no way of determining the truth. And that's why I don't think it belongs here.
May I ask the chairman a question? Do you have any sort of timeline that you feel on this deed restriction?
In terms of the court case?
Terms of the court case.
Well, we want it to end as soon as possible.
Well, I know that, but I'm, I'm...
I'd like to say it'll be over in six months. I've seen, I'm involved in a case in downtown from 2009, it's still going on. Hopefully, six months, but there's really no telling.
Just for purposes of, of, of where we are right now in the structure here, I've, I've asked to amend the resolution. The person who moved the resolution has agreed to the amendment, but you seconded it. Do you agree to the amendment?
I'm not comfortable. I, um... I just feel like I should, I'd like to make a motion to table it. I'm, I know, nobody wants to hear that, but...
I believe that we are out of time.
We're out of time, that's right, we're out of time. I'm sorry, we're out of time.
Yeah, I believe that we've got a, we're up against a...
That's right, okay.
Really hard deadline on this.
Okay, I forgot that.
Commissioner, would you like to...
That's true.
Would you like to discuss this in executive session?
I would, I would.
And get counsel?
I would.
Okay. We can do that?
We can do that.
All right. As you may know, we were, we met in executive session to discuss a legal matter based on, on this.
Can I just jump in there real quick?
No, it's a legal matter.
Do you mind if I just jump in there real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
When, when we say this, I mean, we often use the term executive session, and people are wondering what the heck it is. As you know, in, in Pennsylvania, as in a lot of other places, you have to have open meetings, and, you know, everything has to be done according to the sunshine law and the, and the open meetings law. However, there are some exceptions, which makes sense if you think about it. One of them is if you have some legal questions that you want to ask of your lawyer, then you can do that in, in what's called an executive session. But there's no voting, Nick, it's done in the executive session. There might be some arguments with, with respect to questions. You might have heard voices being raised, but there's no vote. There has not been a vote, and there won't be a vote until we do it out here on the floor. So, that's, just so everybody knows where we are.
Okay. Now, what was on the floor was, go ahead.
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to withdraw my amendment to Commissioner Wexler and propose a different amendment for his consideration as the moving party, and then Ms., Mrs. Hall's consideration as the seconding party, where my amendment had removed condition two of the resolution. I would like not to remove condition two, but I would like to add a condition to condition two, so that it currently reads, "The architectural elements described to the planning commission at its January 8, 2015 meeting shall be incorporated into the construction of any and all houses erected on the property. In the event, a legally binding and final decision is issued by the appropriate judicial authority stating that the existing deed restriction, which limits the number of houses which may be built on the property, is unenforceable." Mr. Wexler, do you accept that change?
I do accept that change.
Mrs. Hall, do you accept that change?
Uh, any and all houses.
Yes. Did I say that, any and all houses?
I do not accept that change.
Okay. So, now we're, we're back to the original motion? Okay?
Yes. I believe that article, that section two, the, the purpose of offering that amendment, Mr. President, was that I do not believe it is fair to impose upon these builders the, the restrictions of section two of the architectural elements if it does not include the construction of both houses. It was presented to the planning commission as what would happen if two houses were built, and what the houses would look like. If they are only, if they are restricted by the courts, and by us, because of our restriction of number four in this resolution, that they can only construct on one lot, I do not believe that we have, A, the specificity in number two to enforce this, or B, I don't think we have the right to tell them how to build on that one lot. I believe they came to the planning commission and offered how they would build if they could build on both lots. It is not fair to impose upon these people the restrictions they were willing to put on themselves if they were allowed to build two homes and impose them on one home. That is not fair. I think it is outside of our jurisdiction, and I don't think the planning commission did us any favors here in, in, in not describing to us the specificity of what they, they wanted to limit these folks to. And clearly, if we're talking about fair, the offer to, to show what these things would look like was what they would both look like if they were both purchased. So, I will not vote for this resolution in its current configuration.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Heilman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. McGarretty?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
No.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
No.
It's 5-3.
5-3.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was voted down. 5-3.
Mr. President, I would like to, before we move to a new item, I would like to move this resolution be reconsidered by this board, but with, with the change as I described to section two, as exactly as I read it into the record. So, I don't want to read it again, but for this resolution to be passed, but with the changes to condition two as I described, limited to any instance where a court allows them to build two houses. I need a second. Earring none.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
So, we have a new motion on the floor? Because the first one was denied. Okay.
So, we're back to the same resolution?
No.
No, no.
This is now the resolution as I hoped and tried to amend.
As you hoped for.
Yeah, no.
Because we gotta do something.
Wait a second. I was confused on that.
Bill, second.
Okay. This is with, this is with taking...
I move the, I move the motion. It is with two as revised, as I said on the record a minute ago, and Mr. Wexler has seconded it.
All right. Everybody clear?
Now I am.
Okay. Please call a roll.
You've got people shaking your heads up there.
Denied.
Clarify exactly what you're voting on.
No, no, no.
Somebody even said they weren't sure what they just voted on.
No, no, wait a second, wait a second. Hold on a second. Does everybody understand what they're voting on?
Yes.
I was under the impression we were voting on the original one on that.
No, we are not voting on the original one. This is Larry's amended motion.
Okay.
Which, I believe strikes number two, right?
No, no.
It adjusts number two.
Adjust number two as I described on the record.
It's the same thing. I get it.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Well, wait, it's not the same thing as striking number two. What I said was, this motion now before me is resolution number 1972 of 2015 with the change that number two is conditioned upon a ruling by a court that the deed restriction is unenforceable. As I said it earlier in the record, the exact language I used.
Okay. Please call a roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mrs. Hall?
No.
Mr. Siegel?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can't.
Mr. Heilman?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell? And Mr. Oliva?
It would be a general denial, and that would be then spelled out in my decision letter, which would, would, would tell you that you can't, that we have to honor what the zoning ordinance says, and we would have to, the motion is denied, and it's denied based upon the provision in our zoning ordinance that says that you have to consider a deed restriction. In this instance, the deed restriction was for one property only, so this, that the matter is denied, and that's the basis for our denial, that there is a deed restriction, and that, that's where this, that's where we are right there.
Okay. Now we have to, we have to move on. Number eighteen.
Mr. Chairman? Make a motion to adopt Resolution 1973, 2015, that the management responsibility of the funds currently managed by the Valley Forge is hereby transferred such that one half of the police fund assets and one half of the civil fund assets shall be transferred to and hereafter managed by I and R Advisory Service, LLC. The remaining value of the funds currently managed by Valley Forge shall be transferred to and hereafter managed by the PFM Group and authorizing the township manager to make such action as he may deem necessary or appropriate to accomplish the divisions and transfer of management responsibility described in Paragraph One of this resolution as efficiently and quickly as practical.
Second.
Let me come back. Hold on. Where are we? What number?
Hold on a second. I'd like to take another executive session, if we could. I want to ask for another executive session. I want to talk to you. I want to talk to you on that.
I agree. I agree. I think that was...
Yeah.
I agree.
You want to hold this up? I'm sorry, on the floor. Yeah. Can we have, Jim, can you clear this up for us, please?
Well, I could, yes, I can, I can clear up what, I mean, I'll tell you what I, what I did. I had some, I have some concerns that I brought up and to the board, and where we are now is when you have a motion on the floor and you vote on it, you know, you vote the motion up or down, and there, you know, in this instance, we're doing a subdivision land development review, and there has to be a decision made on the actual, on the actual application itself. When we vote down no as to the application with certain conditions, then, although I think that the, you know, maybe, I think that what we want to do is make sure that the record is clear, that there was a vote on the actual application itself. Now, we, as you all probably are aware, you can't just keep asking for the same motion to be said over and over again, but if there is any change to the motion itself, which would, which is of material in nature, then I do think it can be brought up again, and I do think that it's important that the commissioners consider that, because if you don't make a decision on the actual motion itself, then you could be in a situation where there's a deemed approval. So, having said all that, then I would say that we're back to the commissioners to see if there's anyone that has anything to add along those lines.
Mr. President? President, I would move, I would move the adoption of another resolution, a form of Resolution 1972-2015. We have considered Resolution Number 1972-2015 in its original configuration, and we have considered it, and that was denied. We considered it with changes to Condition Two. That was considered and denied. I move for approval Resolution Number 1972 of 2015 in its original configuration, but deleting in its entirety Condition Number Two. "The architectural elements described to the Planning Commission at its January 8, 2015 meeting shall be incorporated into the construction of any and all houses erected on the property." That language is stricken from the resolution. I have now moved for approval.
Second.
Okay. So, point of clarification. If we want the aesthetics in the...
Legal advice out here.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, I think, again, we probably want to go back.
Okay.
If we're going to do this, I don't want to do that here. I mean, I really don't.
Let's, let's go.
Okay. All right. We're going to take one more executive session.
Yep. I apologize for the delay. I just wanted to make sure that we had everything right before we go ahead and vote.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that after the vote, just to have the solicitor again explain the vote to the residents, if they didn't understand it, they do so now.
Okay. As I understand it, where we are now is there's a motion on the floor, which was substantially different than the first two motions, and it's substantially different in that the motion says that the Planning Commission's Paragraph Number Two is deleted in its entirety. So the motion would be to approve the plan subject to the conditions in the Planning Commission's letter, numbers one, two, or no, one, three, and four, and five, and two is out. So that's the motion that's on the floor. So when, when the vote takes place, what I envision happening is if you're in favor of that being, what will happen on the application is you would vote yes. If we vote, if it's voted down, if that motion is voted down, then that, just that motion is voted down, because we still haven't really voted on the plan, because we're only voting on a motion with conditions now. So what we need to do is take a vote now. If you have a yes vote, then that would, that will end it. If it's a no vote, then we have to see whether there's another motion, because this is the last day on the time clock, which would enable, or would trigger a deemed approval, which nobody wants. So, maybe Fenton might want it, but everybody else doesn't want it.
Yeah. Somebody wants one of those.
So, okay, so now you're going to vote on this motion, and the motion is as I, as I just stated.
Okay. So, we have to vote to approve it with the conditions.
We don't have to.
No, no, I know, but what I'm saying, if...
If you, if you vote, if there's a, if there is a, an approval of this motion, it will at least make a decision on the plan for tonight, and then we'll see what happens with respect, either side files an appeal. But if we vote down the motion, then you still don't have a, an action on the plan, so we'd have to keep trying until we got some motion that decided whether there was an approval or denial of the plan.
Or it would be deemed approved.
Or if we, if we didn't do anything, it would be deemed approved. That's right.
Okay. Call a roll. Yeah, call a roll.
Mr. DiMelio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Hileman?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
No.
Okay. Number nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pass on, I don't have an answer back on my senior citizen, so I'll, I'll pass on my appointment.
Steve?
I'll table mine.
Okay.
I still have no seniors in my ward.
Okay.
I'm thinking about asking my wife next.
Qualify yet? Not me. Oh, I do?
Yeah.
Oh. I thought I did this. I thought I appointed Michael D'Antonio to this.
I don't think so.
Oh, Michael D'Antonio.
He just keeps not getting back to me. He keeps leaving her messages.
I'll get you that. No. No, he's a family psychologist.
I don't think there's anybody left. Why don't we wait till...
Okay, do we, you got it?
Yeah.
You ready? For number twenty? Yeah, okay, you got that? Okay.
Okay.
Continuation of citizens' form for non-agenda items. Anyone?
Christine Ferris has something there.
Oh, Christine Ferris.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, I just wanted to invite you to the One Book One Philadelphia event that is being held at the Haverford Township Free Library. For the eleventh year, the library is partnering with the Free Library of Philadelphia, the School District of Haverford Township, and the Rotary Club of Haverford Township, to bring the author here to Haverford Township, or the only Delaware County library that partners with the Free Library. The author, Christina Baker-Klein, who wrote Orphan Train, will be coming on Tuesday, March the seventeenth, starting at the high school for a book discussion, and then a book signing and reception with luncheon at the library. So I invite you all. Thank you. And also to invite you to a Jazz Cafe on Friday, March the twenty-seventh, at seven PM. So thank you. Lots of good things happening at the library.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you, Christina. How do you get somebody to sign your Kindle? That's what I have my book on.
Okay. New business.
Mr. President? Are you everyone? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of us was going to raise.
Yeah, Mr. President, back in October, when we took the vote for the library, we did put, the board agreed that the staff would have six months to find a different location for the library or respond back to the board, and the date was put as March fifteenth, which is actually this Sunday. Due to, as we have seen this evening, a very full agenda and a very busy schedule, I would like to ask the Board of Commissioners to amend that date to April, our April meeting, which actually, the voting session, which is April the thirteenth.
Second.
I'd like to make, make a motion to...
Okay.
To change that date to April the thirteenth, 2015, if I may.
Second.
Text date. All right. All right. Please call a roll.
Action to add it to the agenda?
I, yeah, you probably do. Yes.
Mr. President, I would move that we allow Ms. Hall's motion to amend our resolution from the September meeting, extending the date for the library until April the thirteenth, to be added to our agenda.
No second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. So it's added to the agenda? Go ahead, Jane.
So I'd like to make a motion to change the date from March fifteenth, 2015, to April thirteenth, for the library to report back to the Board of Commissioners concerning the location and renovation of the library.
Yeah, and that was, okay.
Second.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up. That was, that was me. I didn't want it to, didn't want them to come in with having 10110 be in, and Pammy Road on the agenda. Either that, or we'd have to come in at five o'clock, and nobody wanted to do that. So...
Or stay till five.
Right. So that's why we're moving to the thirteenth of April.
You're going to take a roll, or you're going to do a voting challenge?
Yeah. Let's do, we can do it by voice vote, right?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against?
What's this for now?
For the library.
To amend the motion.
Well, yeah, no.
Okay.
Dan, when's, when did you say that date was that you had for the YMCA?
The constituent meeting will be April twenty-second.
It's a Sunday?
No, it's a Wednesday.
Any other, any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I...
Okay.
...ask these out, everything the solicitor already has when these, if my colleagues would just take one of these. This is in reference to... I don't have it.
I'm sure everyone has seen the emails regarding the wireless communications here in Haverford Township back in last year, midsummer, that the AT&amp;T had pulled their application for Temple Lutheran for a cell site at that location. And in addition to that, there are residents in the area that would like to pursue an opportunity to look at our township ordinance and actually restrict. In fact, I have the email right here of, I won't say who it's from, but that, there's an email here, which everybody already has, I believe it was sent to everyone, and in that email it says, this sentence is, "With in mind, with this in mind, I think it is time to present new zoning restricting these facilities to all, to only being installed on township property." So, in other words, instead of coming back every couple of years for, say, the neighborhoods who are against this and fighting it, they would like to know if we could put in our ordinance, I'm sorry, Larry, didn't you get one? It's, you should. In our ordinance that would restrict cell facilities only to be installed on township property. So if it was anywhere else, oppose that. Now, that being said, I also gave everybody, what they refer to is Lower Merion's ordinance. Everybody has a copy of that. You can certainly go online for it also, and I guess if you, on the first page, if you go down to Paragraph C, number one, or should say Section C, Use Regulations, and Paragraph Number One. So that's my understanding, is what they're referring to is that, for wireless communication. Now, my reason for bringing this up is that I wish the township solicitor, who has already, I've spoken to, and the zoning officer I've already spoken to, and a couple colleagues also regarding this matter, I would like everybody to take the opportunity, when they have it, to read through it and so that we can have a discussion regarding this matter next month.
Okay.
I would make sure. I'd be happy to do it.
We'll put it on the agenda for the work session, and we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Larry? You got it? Okay. Any other new business?
Are we, I'm sorry, are we, we're talking about, talking about it, the work session, but this would be a change to our zoning regulations?
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not asking for the change. The, it was asked that...
Oh, right, a discussion, okay.
Yep.
We should, do we still have a, related, there was somebody who worked with the cell community who was our go-between when we were putting those boosters up throughout the township.
Tammy from Next G?
Yeah. Right, Tammy, that's who it was.
If, if, if that person is still in the region, is still in this business, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have her appear at that thing. She was very conversant, and, I mean, there's a great deal of restrictions on what we can do, and it would just be good to hear them.
Okay. We'll have Lori reach out to her.
Lori, also get us a copy of ours, so we can compare it to these two, so we can see. The basis of discussion is to see what Lower Merion's is versus ours, I assume, right?
Yeah.
So we need a copy of ours along with this as well.
Yes. Yep. And the, the email that you see there, that was sent to everybody, is, is stating that it's not just this gentleman, but others on the street or in the, in the area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to other business. Commissioner DiMelio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frequently, I talk about our emergency services, whether it be the volunteer firefighters or the police officers in this, in this town, and indeed in the area, in the county. What a tragic day for the Philadelphia Police Department after Officer Wilson was shot in the head and killed during a violent confrontation with two suspects inside a video game store, and this happened Thursday afternoon, as many of you know, and I've watched the, the news stories regarding this officer. From what I understand, and from the, from the Police Commissioner Ramsey, he said that he was the, one of the best police officers in the city, bar none. And it just goes to remind me, when we talk about our, our veterans, and if, if Mr. Halsworth was here, he would be reminding us of our veterans as well. My dad was a WWII vet. Many of our relatives here were, were in the, in the service, and many of you, some of you here have been in the service. So, that's my understanding, is what they're referring to is that, for wireless communication. Now, my reason for bringing this up is that I wish the township solicitor, who has already I've spoken to, and the zoning officer I've already spoken to, and a couple colleagues also regarding this matter, I would like everybody to take the opportunity, when they have it, to read through it, and so that we can have a discussion regarding this matter next month.
Okay.
I would make sure, I'd be happy to do it.
We'll put it on the agenda for the work session, and we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, Larry, you got it? Okay. Any other new business?
Are we, I'm sorry, are we, we're talking about, talking about it at the work session, but this would be a change to our zoning regulations?
No, sir, I'm not asking for the change, it was asked that...
Great, a discussion, okay.
Yep.
We should, do we still have a, related, there was somebody who worked with the cell community who was our go-between when we were putting those boosters up throughout the township.
Tammy from Next G?
Yeah. Right, Tammy, that's who it was.
If that person is still in the region, is still in this business, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have her appear at that thing. She was very conversant, and, I mean, there's a great deal of restrictions on what we can do, and it would just be good to hear them.
Okay, we'll have Lori reach out to her.
Lori, also get us a copy of ours, so we can compare it to these two, so we can see, the basis of discussion is to see what Lower Merion's is versus ours, I assume, right?
Yeah.
So, we need a copy of ours along with this as well.
Yes, yep. And the email that you see there, that was sent to everybody, is, you're stating that it's not just this gentleman, but others on the street or in the area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to other business. Commissioner DiMillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frequently, I talk about our emergency services, whether it be the volunteer firefighters or the police officers in this town, and indeed in the area, in the county. What a tragic day for the Philadelphia Police Department after Officer Wilson was shot in the head and killed during a violent confrontation with two suspects inside a video game store, and this happened Thursday afternoon, as many of you know, and I've watched the news stories regarding this officer, from what I understand, and from the Police Commissioner Ramsey, he said that he was one of the best police officers in the city, bar none. And it just goes to remind me, when we talk about our veterans, and if Mr. Housworth was here, he would be reminding us of our veterans as well. My dad was a WWII vet, many of our relatives here were in the service, and many of you, some of you here have been in the service. Anything can happen, even with our fire police, I've said this in the past, you know, so when you had a storm like we had the other day, we don't even think of our public works people that can get injured driving the playoffs. It can become very difficult. I did it once with, I forget his name in our ward, the supervisor.
In our ward?
Public Works, yeah. He was a pickup.
Not sure. Doc?
Not Doc.
No, Doc's not.
Mr. Sinnebaldi?
No.
Bobby Stillman?
No. Oh, my God, he's going to be so angry, I can't remember his name.
He comes, Bill.
Anyway.
They cleared the highways, Steve, because once they found out you were out there, everybody got in.
No, no, I didn't do it this time, but it just goes to show you that even doing that, how difficult everybody's job is that's out there servicing us while we're home sometimes, just sleeping, you know, I hear the siren go off, and Bill's a member of Manoa who goes out there, Bill knows firsthand, the dangers that everyone faces, and I just think we can't thank every man and woman that volunteers their time and efforts for our country. And it was very moving, the story about Officer Wilson, that was tragically killed, and I wish nothing but the best for his two children, who are now without a father. And I thank, again, Chief, the police, and our volunteer firefighters, and our fire police, and the public works, too. That's it.
Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I don't have anything except to echo the same feelings as Commissioner DiMillo, and thank the Public Works Department and Larry Gentile for all your timeliness and everything on Thursday, because that was kind of crazy. So, we appreciate it, and obviously all the officers and everything that they do every day for us. Thank you.
Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, just a couple things. First, for people, we know there's going to be lots of potholes, and I think Mr. Gentile can comment, that PennDOT's been in the township trying to do as best as it can, considering the conditions of the roads following the last, you know, couple of storms, and just remember that PennDOT is responsible for the state highways.
You need to pick a truck of asphalt.
Yeah. Just a reminder, as I mentioned earlier, on April 22 will be my constituent meeting, I'm holding it jointly with Commissioner Hall, it'll be at 7:00 PM in this room, and I'll be sending out email notices as well. The last thing, and it's unusual, but it's two months in a row, but I'm particularly happy to present to the library, people who know me know that I've spent the last almost seven years writing a biography of my mentor, a college professor who had his students in government, public service, judges, entertainment, all of whom, including me, sort of owe our careers to him. And the book finally was published about two weeks ago, and the theme that goes through it, his name was Sid Wise, is that those of us who do public service, and he wrote the definitive book on how the legislature works in Pennsylvania, need to do so with civility, with cooperation, and to cross party lines in order to get the best results because it's, you do what you think is right and what is right for the people. And I've learned, you know, I live his lessons every day, and I only can aspire to what he did. But I think even tonight, you saw this board dealing with contentious issues, but did so with civility and professionalism, and for that, he would be proud. But I'm particularly happy to give this book, which is a labor of love and a passion, where I interviewed everyone from presidential chiefs of staff on down to the library, and I thank Christine for staying this late, because you're about the only one left.
That's all I have.
Booker, Dano.
I only have one thing, and I'm sure Jimmy can expand on a little bit more afterwards, but the 29th of March is the Kevin Kane, 10th Annual Kevin Kane Walk and Run. It starts at 3:00 PM at Annunciation Church, and it's a great event, raises a lot of money. I saw work firsthand this year with somebody who was reported to me, they were having, somebody in the family had cancer, they were having some problems with pills, and called Rosie, Rosie checked it out, and then jumped right in, and helped out the family, and it's just a great event. Again, it's the 29th of March, 3:00 PM. After the Walk and Run, there's a nice silent and live auction at Brookline Fire, and they, like I said, they raise a ton of money, and it's just a great event. So, come on out.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend our public works staff on their excellent work in the last several weeks with the really crazy weather events we've had. I think we are victims of our own success. The expectations of some of our constituents are such now that they couldn't understand why an hour after the precipitation started falling, everything wasn't clear already. But the speed with which our staff worked, and the diligence that they worked, and the pre-planning, the putting down of the brine, the township manager Gentile keeping us all informed of the most up-to-date information with the weather, really made our township stand out among the townships around it in terms of our roads and our responses to emergencies. So, I just, I was stopped the other day on Saturday by somebody who said, looked at me and said, "I understand you're one of the commissioners in the township," and I braced myself and said, "Yes, I am." I said, "I'm Commissioner Heilman," as a matter of fact.
You said, "I'm Jeff Heilman." I'm Jeff Heilman.
Oh, I hear great things about you, right?
And he said, "You're bigger than you look on TV." And then, and then he said, "Please tell me, please tell the public works on my behalf and the behalf of my neighbors how much we appreciate how hard they worked." So, please, Mr. Gentile, extend to the very hard-working staff that you employ in your public works department, who really went above and beyond, I think, in dealing with this weather. And hopefully, it's the last, the kids enjoyed what I hope will be the last snow days of the spring of 2015.
Going to school until July 15.
So, that is all I have, other than to thank my colleagues for their patience and their diligence on today, tonight's difficult votes, and I appreciate especially the assistance and the very good guidance of our township solicitor, who was wrestling with some fairly prickly issues tonight, and I thought he handled a board full of alpha males and females pretty well.
He's a professional, here, here.
Thanks.
Very good job, Jim.
Okay, Commissioner McGarrett?
Okay, well, let me just say, number one, exactly what everybody else is saying, but for all our employees who deserve a big hand for what they've had to put up with this winter, and keeping this township running, whether they're up in the office, or Larry's out running around in the car, the police have been out there on the job doing it, and public works, you hear, I hear it all the time from people, they come to Havertown, we get through there, it's when we have to go to other townships, we have a problem. So, that's number one. Number two, John Foley Casino Night is on the 28th of March, down at the school. Number three is what Jeff was talking about, Kevin Kane, the registration's from 1 to 3, and I think you can register the day before at McGill Cuties in Brookline, online down there, but Kevin Kane is 1 to 3, and then 3 starts the race. And they also have a new idea this year where they have a card with baseball, and you donate $10 for that, and that goes to the Kevin Kane Foundation. But if you win, you win a trip to Wrigley Field, the Phillies games, a big dinners, three-day stay. It's really something nice that a lot of people can't get into the race, and this is a way, it gives them a shot at something. And the final thing is what Steve is talking about, Officer Wilson, just so everybody knows, over at City Line Center, they do have the Police and Fire Credit Union over there, and I understand that they're accepting donations there for Officer Wilson. So, it would be good, I know I'm going to go over and give him something, because the gentleman was a true officer who sacrificed his life just to save not only his fellow colleagues or whoever, but there was people in the store, and he sacrificed his life for everyone, so he was one heck of a cop.
Larry, can I ask that you get the address to that, and maybe we can send it to our constituents, and, you know, I'll do something there, too, Jimmy, so...
Yeah, I think there's already a fund set up for the educational fund for his two children, so it's a good cause.
Commissioner Wood?
I'm sorry, no.
No, we'll locate it.
You can get it off, like Channel 6's website has a link to it as well.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes, I have a constituent meeting with the Hilltop Civic Association on March 26, 7:30 at Bon Air. I'll echo the sentiments of public works, and also, my, thanks to Larry, I don't know, we've all been getting updated with texts throughout the days and all these bad weather things, and they've come at appropriate times, so we have the information to talk to people in our neighborhood, so thank you. From the top down, it's been a first-rate organization, so thank you as well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Excuse me, yes, at this point, I want to echo what everybody said, I agree. And I just want to add one thing for kudos there to our township, the crossing guards. They are out there, you know, every school day, and in the rain, and the cold weather, and the snow, and you name it, all the time, and battling the people who want to get to work and trying to cross the kids at the same time. So, kudos to them. If, you know what, if they like coffee, somebody, as we go by, just throw them a cup of coffee, what have you, or whiskey, maybe they prefer that. And St. Patrick's Day is this, the 17th, so everybody, please enjoy yourselves and be responsible, and remember when returning home that you're going through our neighborhoods, please be responsible. And that, everybody have a great month. See you next month.
The address for that Police and Fire Credit Union, where I believe it's set up, is the closest one, at least for us, is 7604 City Avenue, Philadelphia, PA. It's in that shopping center, it was like a Wendy's there, Dunkin' Donuts, right around there. It's kind of between the Wendy's and the Dunkin' Donuts. Not that I've been to both, but I have.
1910, is that Overbrook?
19...
City Line Center, where the movie used to be, right in that...
19151.
51?
151.
151. Okay. I just want to echo what everybody else said, and I want to wish my daughter a happy birthday tomorrow. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And happy birthday to you tomorrow, Mary.
Yep.
Almost.